Could somebody? Hey Pam, can you hear me back there? Are you, are you ready? Okay. All right, good evening. Let's call the meeting to order please. Today is Tuesday, it's November 14th. We're here at the Civic Center for our regular scheduled council meeting. If you would, we'll stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's start with the call roll please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Albrecht.
Here.
Mayor Cassidy.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Platt.
Here. Thank you. My only comments are, with Ms. Albrecht here, I certainly want to recognize the loss of her, not only a dear friend of mine, but to many of us here, and we offer you our condolences for the loss of Al, and we know that that's been a tough time for you.
Thank you.
So, please, please know that we're thinking of you.
Thanks.
All right. Rex, do you have anything?
No, I'd mention to Jeff Tenler passing away.
Absolutely. Former council member Jeff Tenler passed about a week ago, or give or take. Want to remember their families. Anything?
Nothing.
All right, citizens, citizens comments? Any citizens comments? I think everybody knows the rules. I see a hand. All right, please come forward.
Mary Lee Rollerson, 416 Texas Drive, Mexico Beach. I work in one of the local boutiques here in town, and when I took that job, I decided that I was gonna make it my business to be an ambassador for Mexico Beach. So, all the customers who come in, I greet them, I say hello, I ask them where they're from, and I always ask them for their feedback about Mexico Beach. And I just want to tell the council, I have yet to hear one negative comment about Mexico Beach. And I know there's been some rumors of people being dissatisfied, or tourists being dissatisfied, and people being unhappy. That has not been my experience, I've been working there for a year. I have yet to have one single negative comment about Mexico Beach. So, people love it here, they love coming here, they love the people here. So, I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Any others? Okay. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. One set of minutes from October meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any corrections, additions? If not, is there any opposition? That motion carries five over. On to scheduled appearances, Ms. Gaddis.
Hello, council. Before I start, I'd like to say, Linda, I'm so sorry for your loss, I did not realize that.
Thank you.
That Al had passed. He was something else.
Yes, he was.
Okay, at that time again, I show up with Tom the Turkey. It's time to talk about the golf cart parade. For those of you that may be new faces that don't know, we started the golf cart parade in 2009. In fact, I've got one of our first stockings that all the golf carts used. We started it because I have a little addiction to my golf cart, and I decorate it every month. Now, some months, there's not a holiday, so I just make up a holiday and decorate it. So, probably 12 years ago, I had it all decorated and was going to the post office, and a little boy come out and stood on the side of the road and waved. And he wondered where the rest of the parade was. And so, I thought, oh, that's what we need to do. So, it was nine years ago, I came before the council and said, let's do this. And every year, it's gotten better. And I think we really, last year, worked out a lot of the kinks with the chief that we had, and things really went smooth last year. So, that's a little bit of the history. The golf cart parade is meant to complement the tree lighting. It's a family event. We want you to bring your children, your grandparents, your great-grandparents, your neighbors. It's the one time of the year we can all come together, we don't have to agree on the president or taxes or anything, we're just coming together as a community to have a good time. We welcome church groups, individuals, businesses, you know, whatever you want, however you want to come and participate. If you don't have a golf cart, a lot of times, we have people that will loan a golf cart. They don't want to decorate it, but they don't mind if you decorate. So, if there's someone out there that says, I want to be in the golf cart parade, I don't have a golf cart, get with me, because, you know, sometimes we can work that out. Rules, people always ask me about rules. I'm not real ruled, but anyway, here's my rules. Decorate with lights. Garland with lights. Inflatables with lights. Stuffed animals, more lights. Prompts, more lights. Dress in a costume if you want to, and more lights. Okay, and there is a rumor that I'm going to be in a full shark costume this year. Now, I'm not gonna deny that, I'm also not gonna confirm it, but there is a possibility I might be dressed as shark this year, but that's all I'm gonna say. Some people bring their dogs, dress them up. Some people like to throw candy. So, we do a little bit, it's just to have fun, and we want everyone to come and have a good time. Lineup will be at 5:00, and that's gonna be down at the fire station. Some of us like to come early, we want to drink hot chocolate, we want to look at everybody else's lights, we want to look at their inflatables, because every year, it's grown, and, well, one year, I had a full nativity set inflatable. So, every year, we get a little bit more. You don't have to have the little tag that you usually have on Mexico Beach on your golf cart to drive. If you're from St. Joe and you want to bring your golf cart, fine, go ahead and bring it. We've had people come from down south also that bring it. So, just bring your golf carts, gather together. A lot of times, we'll bring a toy to give, and I think, are they still doing it this year, the toy drive? Bring an unwrapped toy, and we can, you know, donate that if you'd like to do that. We'll have sign-up sheets, the police will have it, the CDC will have it, I will have some. My phone number is 648-5474. Or you can call the town hall and say, you know, where's the crazy lady that wants us to put more lights and more lights and more lights? And they'll get you, you know, give you my number and get it up with you. Anyway, we're gonna line up at 5:00, the parade starts promptly at 6:00. So, if you want to have a good time, if you want to get lights and some more lights, if you want to throw candy, you know, and like I said, give me a call if you don't have a cart, or if you have a cart you want to loan. We just have a good time. Every year, it's gotten better. Right after the parade, we give you some time to go ahead and scoop back home on your golf carts. So, any questions or?
What's the date?
It's Sunday, December 3rd, and like I said, the parade starts at 6:00, lineup's at 5:00. So, and if you don't know where to get lights, the solar lights are great now, LED solar lights, that's my, I should own stock in that.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to it again this year. Thank you, chief, and chief has really helped out a lot.
Good evening, Jeff Britton with Dewberry. Not a whole lot on the list for project updates this week or this month. The DEP grant for the sand bypass beach restoration system, I believe we finally have an agreement on a way forward with DEP. We have to withdraw our current application and then wrap another application into the previous one that's been approved, but that's the way forward for the full $465,000 that DEP has agreed to give the city. And again, this is for the truck hauling of sand down to the critically eroded portion of the beach further east, much further east than where we can pump to. Alternate water source project. The 72-hour drawdown test is complete. We've got a copy of the report, it's being analyzed by some of our engineers, and the final report is being finalized by our geologist. So, we expect to have that in the next week or two. A copy of that will be forwarded to the city. Next step from there is to survey the area where we're gonna tie in and then to begin our preliminary design. Stormwater master plan, we've been working with Philip, we're developing a scope to address some stormwater issues that were identified in the stormwater master plan. We should have that proposal for the survey services at a minimum, if not with engineering studies, over to the city by the end of the week. The Mexico Beach paving and stormwater improvement projects on 23rd Street, 33rd Street, and the Canal Parkway Extension. We met with DEP last week, they're on board with the projects and how we plan to handle stormwater on all those projects. So, the next step is finalizing the plans and calculations and getting the CCCL permit submitted to Rolando Gomez at DEP. And that's all I got for updates. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to.
What about the pavilion, the pavilion on Canal, on the canal?
I met with Rolando last week and talked about that as well. He understands where we want to put it, we can't get it as far south right now as we'd like to, it's gonna be set at the southern edge of where the previous pavilion was. So, we're finalizing that drawing to get back over to Philip and respond to the comments so we can get that back in and get it moving.
So, we should have that done in eight to 10 years? I'm sorry. The other question I have, are we making any progress on filling the moat around the park? I want to fill some of that so we can create more parking.
Just let me help you.
Yes.
And I'll never give. I met with DEP and asked for a preliminary site review, I met with them on-site for them to look at possibility of filling the moat. And I think that we're talking about a pavilion, you mentioned eight to 10 years, it would be a minimum of that at the rate we're going on the moat with the paperwork, and evidently, I asked Jeff to help us. We also went, he, myself, and another representative, met Panama City to the DEP office, and now it's in the Corps. The Corps has got a hand in this, and I'll turn it, you talked to them, so you know more about that than I do.
Right. They've brought up the question of, is that part of the canal essential fish habitat?
Of what?
Essential fish habitat. And what all that plays into is, depending on whether it's determined to be that, that's gonna drive mitigation costs for the impacts to that area up. Another issue that we're running into is that type of wetland vegetation and habitat there isn't common in the area. To mitigate for it, you'd have to recreate it somewhere, probably in that general vicinity by Parker Park. There's not a mitigation bank within our basin that we can just pay into as mitigation, but even then, that gets, there's a price tag with that, depending on how many acres you're impacting, whether or not they're high quality, or what the specialty is, that goes into how much is owed as well. So, there's a lot of factors that we're still trying to get our head, our head and hands around.
Has anybody from DEP been over here to look at that?
Yeah, I met with.
And DEP has, DEP has been, was very amenable to helping out with the project, they were very helpful with everything. Not to say the Corps wasn't, but there's other agencies associated with the Corps that the Corps can't speak for, like National Fish.
Eight, 10 years.
Wildlife Fisheries.
I mean, I'm, I'm, that's sarcasm.
Well, no, I.
But it's very frustrating.
When you're dealing with the government, I can understand sarcasm. It's ridiculous.
But, we are, we're looking at that, but I don't.
Do they understand that we don't want to fill the whole moat?
They understand everything.
Oh.
And then they will, but truly, they don't understand anything.
That makes sense.
Maybe, maybe you think.
No. I don't think so. I don't think.
We're working on it, believe me, but I don't have good, I did with DEP, I don't with the Corps.
I got in trouble.
I don't have the good feeling, you know, when they dug the canal, dug the canal, when they put the boat ramp in? We dug up seagrasses, and the city went and planted seagrasses along the bank of the I'm just throwing that out, I just thought of that, that with they, the Corps got involved, and they mitigated that by allowing the city to.
Recreate that habitat.
I mean, we didn't, we did not get into what I'm hearing you say that we're having to get into, I mean, that was definitely fish habitat when we dug.
Right.
When the St. Joe Company put that boat ramp in.
Right.
So.
Well, one of the things that, that we're doing to try to see how far we keep going down this rabbit hole, the hoops we're gonna have to jump through, is reviewing the paperwork that was done on the Corey property years ago. A lot of these same studies were done there, and if, they're further downstream towards the Gulf than us, if they weren't subject to these studies, we'll check their paperwork, and we shouldn't be subject to them either. So, that's, that's the next step to get decisions that were made on the.
Right.
Previous work in the area to see what was required.
Well, we appreciate your, your trying to figure out if it's feasible to, to do anything.
Sure thing, glad to help.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dewberry? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Mr. Dingman?
Good evening, Dennis, standing with some professional services moving.
Thank you.
Good to all, see you all again, and tonight, we are going to ask you to make an award on a bid for the final home in the CDOG housing program. First week of October, we bid out the last home in this program. We invited four companies to bid, two showed up, and one ended up submitting a bid. So, the home was for Mr. Tarsha Tarlington at 105 Pinewood Street, that in Rustic Sands. And on the second page is the actual bid analysis. The home was, well, the only bidder was US Mobile Homes, Prestige Home Center out of Panama City, showed up, but they didn't bid. And the bid was 61,970. So, it is a sole source, it was done properly, so in a case like that, we would still ask you to award the bid to US Mobile Homes, but understanding that there was only one bid. And I think I mentioned this last time, it seems like construction and home builders are really, it is a good thing, but they're really busy. Y'all have had probably that same experience, trying to get bids. So, that would be at the end of this presentation. Also, today, we have completed seven. There are two homes that are actually completed, and I'll do final inspections on them tomorrow. And if you award tonight, we'll also go to contract for Mr. Tarsha Tarlington's home. The last two are, one on 13th Street, Ms. Ergo, and then one in Rustic Sands, Ms. Wisner. But, we have nine homes under the program that we have to do, so we've completed eight of them, Mr. Tarlington will be the last one. Are there any questions or?
Tonight you need, tonight you want us to approve the bid, right?
Yes, and there is a recommended action, a motion.
I see that. Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second to award the bid for Mr. Tarlington, that recommended. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition to that motion in a second? Ding, I pass five over.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, under ordinances, we have scheduled the first reading of ordinance 688. Prior to calling for a motion for that, I would like to entertain any comments from the table concerning the ordinance 688. Any discussion?
I've got, you know, I, when you look at the, this, this is the beach vendor permit.
Yeah.
And it's section three. I'm having a problem, applicants may include a request to operate a work vehicle on the beach in the area covered by the permit as well as to and from the nearest vehicle, vehicular access to the beach. I guess, you know, we, we've taken steps and steps and steps, and we just, to me, we get to this, this part here, and I don't think anybody would say that we, that riding on the beach is a good idea. And I think about the Toucans property. And with this in there, we allow a vehicle to do an access point and drive, I don't think Toucans has a access point similar to El Governor or Driftwood. And, and we're going to have an access point if, if any business ever done and allow people to drive down the beach to get to the, that point.
From the county line road?
Sir, ma'am.
Right from the county line road?
County line road, or there's an access point at.
But then you have to go over the.
Gulf Foods.
Canal exit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus, it doesn't define what a vehicular, what a vehicle is.
Yeah.
And this part does it somewhere else.
And, I guess what I'm getting at is, we've taken seven, I think, seven out, and now we're gonna access the beach seven days a week. And then we're gonna ride down the beach possibly. And I think where we, I think where the people may, wanted to go or get there, is that we have no vehicles on the beach. And I'm not prepared to make a motion, whatever, I'm throwing it out there to think about it. And, and I think about High Tide, that where we tell him, he can't ride down the end of the street and deliver waffles or something out there, that we're gonna tell, whether it's High Tide being the vendor, or anybody else being the vendor, that they can access at Gulf Foods or down the road and drive to Toucans and deliver chairs. And I don't, I don't think that's a good thing, whether it's High Tide or anybody else, I would rather see no vehicles on the beach.
Question, if, I'm not sure, and I basically agree, but if we did a definition, one, like Jerry indicated, I think we'd have to define vehicle, I agree with that, if we did this. Yes, thank you. Pardon me, pardon me, thank you. No, I think if we looked at vehicles, we'd have to do as Mr. Wallace indicated and make a definition so we knew exactly what kind of vehicle. What about, I think it was brought up at one time, if we do allow vehicles on the beach, say prior to 7:00 in the morning, and then take this stuff off, you know, after 7:00 at night, where it's not during the time the people are there, would that be anywhere close to what we would want? Again, I'm throwing it out, not proposing.
Others? At the table, at the table, please. You certainly have a chance, just a second. Any other comments from the table?
No, I think that something to think about what Bill said, you know, if we allow them, it's a certain time of the day or after 7:00 PM, and nothing during the day. So, that's something to think about.
Of course, after 7:00 PM, it's dark right now.
Right.
Lights on the vehicle.
Uh, I don't think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I, I would say prior to dark. You know, and do we allow, if, it's gotta be the same for everybody.
Well, before we continue, I've got a couple comments. First is a technicality based on what's written in our packet under, under the title of ordinance 688. If we continue on to read it, it says in there, "Providing a limited exception to leave no trace for holders of beach vending permits." That no longer applies because section seven's been removed. So, the title, as it is written, is incorrect based on the ordinances being presented to us tonight. That's one. Second of all, I have been a proponent of local government being a part of the community in which it serves, I believe strongly in that. I don't think government should separate itself from the community that it serves by recognizing who we are and how we operate. Now, based on what we have come tonight to read, with section seven being removed, there are no exceptions, there's no, there's nothing for a beach business. And also, I've had several phone calls, I've been confronted after several meetings, people come to me and say, Mayor, why are you such a proponent of giving somebody special privileges? Why are you standing or sitting at this table proposing that someone can do something that no one else can do? And I've thought about that, and I've wondered to myself, is that what I'm really doing? So, I decided to investigate what other people do, because I think it's, I think sometimes you get a balance of understanding what I'm thinking and what I'm, I'm a proponent of. So, I checked that out. I went to Bay County, I went to Walton County, Santa Rosa County, Okaloosa County, and Escambia County. And inside of those counties, there's municipalities that do just as we do. There's Panama City Beach, Destin, Fort Walton, Navarre, and Escam, and Pensacola Beach. And every one of them, without exception, not half of them, not two-thirds of them, every one of them have white sand jurisdiction, they have leave no trace, form of leave no trace, they all have beach business operations. Every single one of them. And they allow their businesses to operate just as we have been doing for almost 20 years. So, to those of you that think that I'm sitting here being a proponent that someone can have a special privilege, I would say to you that if you start a business and you come to one of these locations that we've designated, and you make payroll, and you support this community by being a good business partner, then I think you ought to have those too. Because that's what we've had. We've had one business in almost 20 years, produced no harm to this city in any shape, form, or fashion, zero. Been an excellent community business person as well as a citizen. And I'm not gonna vote for or support anything that injects harm or causes hardship to a mom-and-pop business owner that has the record that this particular business owner has had. When you contribute to the charm and the, and the character of our city, I want to say thank you. I want to, I want to be a representative of a government that appreciates those that invest in our community. I'm not looking to say hit the road. I'm not looking to govern someone out of business. That's not why I came, that's not why I'm sitting here. So, I want to make my position clear tonight. I am not in favor of governing somebody that has produced what, the one business that we have data on that can show factual contributions to this city and us find some reason. we have data on, that can show factual contributions to this city and us find some reason that what he's doing and why he's been doing it and how he's been doing it, all because of leave no trace. And I'll close my thoughts by saying, leave no trace is to me a curtain that we're hiding behind. That's all that is. The people that supported leave no trace, the those that voted for leave no trace, their mission and objectives to me have been accomplished. That's why every city, every county that has leave no trace allows businesses to operate, they don't, they're not hiding behind leave no trace. It's done, it's over. It's now local government's place to put in objectives, regulations, rules that govern how we want our beach businesses in the few locations that we've designated, how do we want them to operate? I want them to stay here, I hope more come. It's who we are, and when you start getting away from who we are, then to me, local government is lost, we've lost contact with our community. So to take seven out is the same as saying you can't operate. You can't do it. Do we want him crossing the road, our other businesses crossing Highway 98 twice a day in the morning and the evening hauling all that stuff across Highway 98? Do we really, is that what we really wanna do? For what reason? What has he done? Be an excellent business partner, that's what he's been. All right, Chair will entertain a motion. Then, if we get a motion, we get a second, we'll open the floor to discussion. You can promise that. All right, there's a, we're having a first reading, is there a motion to read?
So move.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. I saw a hand earlier, and I'll recognize those that wanna, whoever it was. Connie, you were first, come on.
I'm Connie Reisinger, 504 Maryland Boulevard, Mexico Beach, and I've lived here since 1992. I would like to take just a second to say that I was in, I sent a letter out this week to a lot of people, and the first thing I'd like to say is I was incorrect about the return of items to people that, where they had been taken off of the beach. I had an old copy of the, of the ordinance, and Mel was very kind and, and found me the correct copy, so I wanted to make that clear. I have, I would have the issue, though, of this latest ordinance. I am going, I appeal to you to reinstate section seven, limited exception from leave no trace. Back, put it back into the ordinance, please. I hope everyone here can see the, you had it up there in yellow, to read that ordinance, that's section seven. At the last meeting, you deleted that. That has far-reaching effects, and I want you to think about this very carefully. If this ordinance is adopted without that section being put back in there, you have harmed a man who has been our friend, he is the ambassador practically for our beach, he's the best example of a business. He has been there for 17 years. He has made available entertainment for our tourists, for our families, for the residents. He has been on call to assist in any water difficulties, day or night. He does so willingly because he's a good man and he belongs here. For 17 years, he has never asked for any trouble about anything, he's never caused any trouble. People use his beach chairs, they ride the jet skis, they do parasailing. His vendor equipment in his area, and it's always in his area, is clean and out of the way. Now, no, no leave no trace movement has evolved into something more than we ever anticipated by many of us. By eliminating section seven, you are in essence jeopardizing a man's livelihood. There are only four businesses on this beach, and there's only one business in front of the El Governor. And it will be profoundly harmed if you drop this section. All of his business activity occurs right there, in front of the El Governor. It does not disturb any dunes because there aren't any dunes there, and it does not harm the small beach area that's right there. If you refuse to reinstate section seven, then I appeal to you to please grandfather this business. The morale of both the citizens, business, and tourists that support him and, and support having certain businesses on the beach, certainly this one, are very unhappy, and they're very sad that we've come to this point. We have not had the right attitude about leave no trace from the very beginning, and we need to get this straightened out and passed and, and go on. If you would have only done what one of you suggested, was to have a beach patrol on duty to explain to the visitors about our ordinance, how different things might be. Hector is a necessary and vital addition to our community, a business that not only offers entertainment, but it also helps save lives. How much better off we would be? Please either reinstate section seven or grandfather this business in front of the El Governor. Thank you.
Saw another hand.
Hello, Nate Odom, 4000 Highway 98. I'm also a business owner at Mexico Beach Marina Development LLC. I'll say value all the time. Mayor, I would like to second everything you said concerning this. And Connie, I couldn't have said any better. Hector is a tremendous asset to the community, brings tremendous value to us, this whole leave no trace, I might even get going on how we ended up with it, but we need to do the right thing, work this out within. That's my thoughts.
Yes.
Shirley Miller, Sixth Street, Mexico Beach. I agree with everything that you've said. I did not vote for it, leave no trace, but if I understand correctly, what has happened is that the people of Mexico Beach went to the voting booths and voted for leave no trace. Now, isn't that what happened? Like I said, I did not vote for it. What Connie and the other gentlemen said, grandfathered the business in, that to me is the best suggestion that I have heard ever since this leave no trace was originally brought up by some members of the council, a different council. It seems that that would satisfy the people like me and others who would like to enjoy the business that this gentleman has had here for 17 years, if I said it correctly. And yet, at the same time, leave no trace behind is keeping others from polluting, should I use that word, our beach with more things? I live at what we commonly know as the dedicated beach. I would not like to see vendors with umbrellas and, and beach chairs or hot dogs and cotton candy being sold at the dedicated beach. So I do think that, that there's a little bit of good to leave no trace behind, but it shouldn't, as you and others say, harm people who have been good citizens here. So by grandfathering them in, unless there is some rules and regulations against it, I suggest the council quickly and earnestly accept that. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw? Yep, you're next.
My name is Gary Woodham, I live at 113 North 38th Street, Mexico Beach. I know and respect all of you, gentlemen and lady. In my opinion, y'all have done a great job. I just feel that the city council's responsibility to this community is to help people, not hinder them. And I think y'all are making a big mistake by taking the action that you're taking, and that's obvious by the audience you've got here tonight, in support of Hector. Please rethink what you're doing, and whatever it takes, whether you change all the information you've got up here, or whether you grandfather him in, that's y'all's decision, but don't leave here tonight making a mistake and destroying some man's livelihood. I don't understand the thinking right now, so all I can do is ask you to please make a change and correct the problem. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay?
Can I say something?
Yes.
I have a few friends, and none of my friends want to sue me. That kinda bothers me, that's all I'm gonna say about that. Early on, when this first came up, the very first time it came up, I suggested that we do what number two says here on section seven. Items be moved landward to the seawall or to the toe of the dunes. And some people did not want to do that. And as far as I'm concerned, that would have taken care of the problem. And I still feel that way. And I think this situation of, of the people, well, the person primarily we're talking about, everybody knows, and it's been, there's no complaints, and I, there's a perfect place to move the items back to the wall there. And I don't have a problem with that. I think I, I was absent tonight this was voted in. I wasn't absent?
No.
I, I voted against it. Oh, okay. Thanks for that. Uh, so, uh, and I'm probably gonna vote against it again, because I think we do need to keep some options open for future businesses, but again, it comes down to the city okaying whatever goes on the beach. And then that's another argument coming down the road, I'm sure, sooner or later. But I don't have any problem with that, especially with the, like I've always thought, moving the items back to the wall. We would have some problems with moving items back to the toe of the dunes, making sure that we knew where the toe of the dunes are. But then I also like the idea of having some, some good-humored person on the beach every day, especially during the busiest time of the year, to explain to all of our visitors what's going on. And that, that's another, another argument about some other day.
There's a motion, and again, we're, we're regulated by what is under the first reading of the ordinance and the language that is so written in here.
Ms. Shaw? Before we do, may I make a comment?
Sure.
I have absolutely nothing against anyone, including Hector. I think he's done a super job, I wanna congratulate him on the job he's done for the past 17 years. Besides doing well in front of the businesses in front of, he's obviously put some of his profits to good use into another business and has recently put them into good use into purchasing a real estate in the city. My problem with an ordinance, and this is built, I've gotta say, over a long period of time, I'm new up here. Leave no trace came in very shortly after I did, and this has been a, a growing experience for me to understand. There are two things to look at, I was on zoning, found out that usually we, if we have a problem with something on zoning, it's with an individual, it's called a variance that we try and put through. The only grandfathered in I remember on that was when, I believe, the LDR was written originally and certain properties were not in certain places at, at that time. What finally has brought me to where I am on this particular ordinance is what an ordinance is to me, sitting up here. An ordinance is an item that actually affects every citizen in this city. Not just in this case, well, for one thing, like the, one that'll be coming up, it'd be like the water ordinance, affects us all as far as our water bill to pass through. This also affects every citizen in the city. I, as a resident, previous to the, the leave no trace in this ordinance, you guys out there, your, your children, your grandchildren, Hector, any other visitor we have coming in, could take everything down to the beach and leave it, if we want to leave it up for a week, we could leave it up for a week before we brought it in. Everyone was treated right straight down the line. Leave no trace came in, basically, and honestly did the same thing, it just said you can only do it between certain times. And I look at this, and, and if we take one instance, and that's where it came down to me, kind of a variance, one individual, which is what we've been talking about more than anything else, versus the whole city. And indeed, we are, as an ordinance, if we allow one individual, one business, to do something different that you can't do, that your children can't do, and I'm sorry, I'm pointing, that's bad, that your grandchildren can't do. On top of that, over that 17-year period of time, our hotels, probably 17 years ago, my guess is, probably most of the people that were our visitors, these people that are the, the fuel to our businesses, most of them probably stayed in those motels. Today, we've changed, unfortunately. We have huge amount of houses out here for rent, we have condos for rent, we have people that do, I think Airbnb or something, things in their backyards for rent. Most of our visitors today that we serve can't do what one person would be able to do. I want Hector to see, I think he is a great businessman, he's been a great person in the community, but as far as an ordinance goes, I wanna look at everybody. I want you to have the same rights under the ordinance as someone else. If indeed we need to do something for an individual, any one of you, any one of our businesses, I think it should be done through something like a variance, something maybe at the time they get their license. But I think the ordinance itself is for all of us, for all of our citizens, and not just one person. Not just today, and not just if Hector was only in business for five years, to serve for five years before we'd have to change it again because of the grandfather, but for as long as it actually meets our citizen, our, our needs and our citizens and our city's needs. Again, I think Hector's done a great job, I wish him well, I don't want to put him out of business, but I've gotta look at the ordinance for the whole city.
I don't, I don't think we can expect the citizens to do things that some businesses can do on the beach. Therefore, we're always gonna be interested in having the correct business on the beach for our citizens to use, and we can control that by permits. for our citizens to use, and we can control that by permits. You know, not everybody wants to bring a 500-pound chase lounge down on the beach, but they have that opportunity now with Hector's there to use that. And again, I think the main thing in the ordinance is that the city has the strength with permits to make sure that whatever is put in the ordinance is followed to the T. Again, I'm voting against, I think section seven's a little stout, and under the situation, like it said, it's worked for seventeen years, I can't see any point in changing it now, and we could, this is something we need to make available to other businesses as well in reason, and we can do that by the permits that we give out.
Well, that's what I have a problem, make it available to other businesses as well, and we're not going to do that. And I look at it differently. I was in business, and I was in business in Savannah, Georgia, and St. Simons. I dealt with the Landings and Sea Island, the city of Savannah, the city of St. Simons. All of them had different rules. Some of them were tough rules, made my job harder. I had to make a decision, then how might, you know, do I want to do business here or not? Figure out a way to do it, figure out, and I don't think, I don't think this would put anybody out of business. I know, I don't think, I think I could figure out a way to do it. I don't know, maybe some people can't, but this isn't, you know, when we started off, we had something that we were going to get rid of the big, heavy chairs, which is the reason for the vehicles and everything down there. Nothing's, and I've made the comment that, you know, we drive down there sometimes just to unlock a lock on a gate. I was walking one day, and they drive from El Governor to Driftwood, supposedly with permission, I don't know, but they did that. And it just doesn't look good to me to be able to drive, for a business to come in above Tucans and drive down the beach to drive up and down the beach, that we let somebody do that. I think there's a way to do it. I think light chairs could be used, the good old-fashioned way of walking it down there and putting it up. It, to me, it doesn't put anybody out of business. I just don't think it would put anybody out of business.
So you're opposed to letting somebody, like, we're talking about Hector here, move his chairs up next to the wall?
Well, you know, when you say the wall, to me, the wall's there, and the wall's the wall. And when you use Panama City as an example, you have to use it as an example. They tried the toe of the dunes and rescinded that also, because DNR said they're tearing up the dunes, so...
Well, I think that we could try it. If we tear up the dunes, we can stop doing it, but I think, again, sooner or later, somebody's going to listen to me about a good-humored person on the beach. And I'm not talking about a policeman every day, but someone to explain to people what's going on on a routine basis in Mexico Beach, as far as the beach is concerned. And I think we could get help from other areas as far as paying for that. But the various people, if they get a permit and they're associated with a business on the beach, that business is going to understand if those people are going to leave their items on the beach overnight. And right now, and I don't know, there's another business on the beach that takes their things in every night and puts them back out every morning. They can do that if they want to. I don't think they would have to if they could, for instance, they're taking care of rental homes, and someone is renting this place on the beach, and they've asked them to, they want to rent chairs for the week. Well, this other individual, this other company is taking their chairs all the way back. Well, as far as I'm concerned, they could put them under the carport overnight. That's very similar to Hector pulling his things up next to the beach wall. I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to try to make this work out. And again, the city has the strength with the permits on who we let do things and where they do them, and everything can be explained in that permit. I just think this is a, this is a little tough in section seven.
Well...
I've said that before, haven't I?
I don't, I'm not wanting to put Hector out of business, nor would I want to put anybody else out of business. But sometimes we have to abide by an ordinance or a rule that we don't like. We've all been there, whether it's in our personal life or in our business life. And we learn to adjust and figure out another way to make it work. I do not like the idea of putting things up against the dunes. I think we're asking for trouble there, because what's the dune line to you and what's the dune line to me could be two different things. Now, early on with this Leave No Trace, there was a discussion that you could just move the things to the wall. That was not welcomed. And I, my opinion, I think if it were welcomed, we wouldn't be in this discussion. But it was not welcomed at all. So I don't want to put them out of business. On the other hand, we have an ordinance, we have a rule, and I think, as adults, we all need to learn how to adjust. Difficult as it is, we've all been there. I'm sure there's not one person in this audience that hasn't had to adjust to something they didn't really like.
So you're talking about the Leave No Trace ordinance?
No, in anything, in life.
No, the Leave No Trace ordinance is what you're, what you're...
Well, right, I said, you know, I would leave, take, leave section seven out. You know, Leave No Trace is an ordinance, and the building, the beach permit is an ordinance, and I know some people don't like it, but that's, sometimes just life is tough.
But if we left section seven in, does that mean we're throwing the Leave No Trace ordinance completely out?
Oh, no, they're totally standalone, independent ordinances.
Would you say that again, please?
They're independent ordinances. They pass separately, they operate separately. They're just, some overlap on the exception.
Okay, so the Leave No Trace ordinance would stand with this exception?
The Leave No Trace ordinance would stand with or without that exception, either way.
Okay, but the Leave No Trace ordinance says everything will be removed from the beach.
Correct.
And this is saying they could leave things up next to the beach wall overnight, I mean, on the beach next to the wall overnight.
Correct.
So that would be okay, and the people, the Leave No Trace ordinance would stand for what it is, and this would stand for what it is?
Correct. This would potentially establish an exception...
An exception to the Leave No Trace. Okay, that's what I'm trying to get...
Right. But the Leave No Trace ordinance itself, it can stand alone exactly as it's drafted, regardless of what you decide on this. It's just there may or may not be an exception established in the spender ordinance.
Okay. So the fact that ordinances are made and agreed upon doesn't mean that they can't be changed in the long run?
Correct.
That was my point.
I do have a couple of technical comments that could be helpful as you deliberate. There was a suggestion about doing grandfathering. You could do that. We haven't really looked at that in the past. There'd be two things to think about if you want to consider that direction further. You want to think about if anybody else might qualify. We've assumed that there's only one, one business that would qualify. You may find that there's another one or two that might argue that they do. And then also, you'd want to define what exactly is being grandfathered. Maybe it's to operate the business just like it was operated in 2017, or maybe it's, I don't know. Otherwise, you might run into a situation where, five years down the road, you have a very different business than what you thought and expected, but that's easy to handle. The mayor had a comment about the title. He's correct. I don't even know if I helped and looked at this ordinance ahead of time. I did notice the same thing when I reviewed the meeting package, that that sentence in the title should have been removed. The purpose of the title really is to provide notice to the public of what we're going to talk about, what's going to be considered, and I, it's misleading. I would be curious, and I don't know the answer to this, was the full ordinance online for a few days? Has it been available, or have people only been able to rely on the title? That's really a question more for staff, because I don't know when things were posted.
We don't advertise the first reading, so it has not been published by title.
Right, but as far as the meeting package on the internet, okay. It's kind of a close call. I mean, the general topic of the ordinance is described correctly by the title, but we all know this is important detail.
Well, that's important detail.
Yeah.
And that's an important detail.
That's what I said. So, I mean, the conservative approach would be, you could always hold off on your first reading, but I think if you proceed, you're probably okay, but it may be something that ends up in a motion and a lawsuit. If there's no rush, it wouldn't hurt to wait, but those are my comments.
First, council, do you want to continue on, or do you want to get the title right?
I think we need to get the title right.
Yes. Okay. All right, then we'll put it on our agenda.
Okay.
For our next meeting, for our next regular meeting for the first reading.
Rex mentioned something about vehicles.
Yes.
And so do we need to clarify vehicles? I question, why do we need a tractor going up and down the beach? And that's the first thing that came to my mind. So do we need to clarify vehicle?
At least I think we need to have a definition that says what type of vehicles were allowed on the beach, if we continue with it. And frankly, I would like to see, if we're going to do that, a timeframe that is in there that also defines when we're allowing the vehicles on, if we're going to allow them. First.
You know, with due respect...
(laughing).
With due respect, after months and thousands of dollars, we still don't do, we still can't figure out what we want to say and how we want to say.
Well, one of these...
And I will say this, and with due respect, life is tough, but it's only tough in Mexico Beach, not tough in Panama City Beach, not tough in Fargo, not tough in Mexico Beach, but it's tough in Mexico Beach.
And we're continuing this, because we each have our own...
Yeah.
...thought process, you know?
No doubt.
Well...
No doubt.
Well, the one thing I, though, I heard is...
All right, I think we can close here. We need to move on. I think we kicked this cap.
We want to proceed, do we want to...
Yeah, we're going to table the first reading.
We're going to table...
Get the title right.
Yes.
And, no, we can't remove the title.
Just table the motion.
We're going to remove the second... Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a motion in a second. I apologize, I apologize. Can you rescind your, I forget, Rex?
Whichever way, I'll rescind if that's...
Can you rescind?
I think I...
Okay, that's fine. So we're going to rescind that, we're going to get the title correct, and we're going to send it for first reading at our next regular meeting.
Anything about vehicle?
Not from me. I don't think it's going to matter if we don't put something in there. About number seven, I don't think it'll matter who, what you can have down there. First. But y'all can fix it. Y'all can figure out what you want to say, send it to the attorney.
And I would also add that that is a minor enough change to define vehicle. You could do that at any point during the process leading up to the second reading.
Yeah, it's section seven that's causing the problem.
Well, the section seven, because it's been such a point of contention for several months, it is the better conservative approach to get the title to be consistent with what we go with section seven. And the way I understand this, no changes to the ordinance, just correct the title.
I will say that I've never seen in the months, the four or five months that I've sat at this table about Leave No Trace, I've never seen anyone, any group of people come to this podium and address this council in such a positive way, and I want to thank y'all, because there is no other identifiable group of people that is against this, that I can find. All right, first reading, order six eighty-nine. Do I have a motion, read the title on it?
So I'm going to do.
We have a motion in a second. Any opposition to reading?
Nope.
This is the first reading of order six eighty-nine. Please do so. Excuse me, hold on, hold on. Any discussion? I apologize. Please read.
Order six eighty-nine, in ordinance for the city of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending ordinance six fifty-five and five sixty-nine, deleting golf cart registration and accompanying references to registration, providing for classification, conflict, sustainability, and effects of date.
Actually, I'd like to make a comment. In general, I agree that having our carts inspected once a year, having to pay thirty-five dollars once a year to run our carts, I didn't like it, still don't like it. I happen, though, because of the church I go to, and we bought a cart about a year ago, ran into Fort St. Joe's ordinance, which I think isn't a bad idea. They don't just say nothing, do it, they register their carts once. If I bought a new cart, which at the time I was dealing with, contacted police department in their case, officer came out, inspected, said, made sure that the brakes work, you know, lights work, all the things we want to work on these carts. They got the VIN number and everything, paid thirty-five dollars. That's forever. But the good side of it was, well, the lousy side is I paid thirty-five dollars. But the good side was, is that it builds a database of carts for the department that if they saw my cart, we did that here, for two days over at the canal, they could look at the VIN number and say, Bill, did you do that by accident, or did someone borrow your cart? It just makes it easy for them. I think instead of just totally doing away with it, I'd like to see us grandfather in, here's another word we've used tonight, those that have been last year, have stickers with the last year, that they have VIN numbers on file, go ahead and keep a database, and then basically any one new buying a cart, or if you sold your cart and it goes to someone else, then register it that one time and not just once a year. My comment.
All right, others?
I like that idea. I don't think we should do away with it completely. I think that it would be nice to be able to realize whose cart's over there, if it's broken, whatever, so I like that idea. Do it once, that's fine.
Then we need to not vote for this ordinance.
Well, that's, again, the protocol is that we're dealing with what's on the paper, what's been advertised. So if you have other ideas, you vote how you want to vote, and then we can rehash this again.
Okay.
Okay.
A good ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Call and roll.
I've already read the motion, there is no...
Oh, I'm sorry, first reading, I apologize. All right, so this is going to come up again, I apologize. If there's ideas or suggestions, I suggest you send them to the city administrator, and they can get passed on to whatever you think is appropriate. The first reading is as written.
Right, right.
All right, we have some second readings for certain ordinances. Gerson is ordered six seventy-five. Do I have a motion, read the title only?
So...
So I have a motion in a second. Is there any opposition? Is there any discussion concerning order six seventy-five? All right, please read.
Order six seventy-five, in ordinance amending the future land use map of the city of Mexico Beach comprehensive plan upon the application of Corey Family LLC to change the future land use designation of a parcel of land from residential low density to tourist mixed use, designating for tourist mixed use land use a certain parcel line within the city of Mexico Beach, Florida, consisting of approximately eighty-eight acres, and designated parcel number zero four one three five dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Said parcel being vacant property located between North Twenty-Second Street and North Thirty-Eighth Street, as more particularly described in the body of the ordinance, repealing all ordinances or partial ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing that this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you. Is your motion for adoption?
If I could only add a few comments, just to cover us on the legal side. So ordinance six seventy-five is... So, ordinance six seventy-five, it's a legislative determination of whether we want to change our future land use map and our comprehensive plan. This has always traditionally been a, considered a public hearing in Florida, so it's decided based on evidence and information presented. So, I think staff has some information, just to discuss the project. The applicant is also here, he may want to make some comments. This, also, between the first reading and second reading, this ordinance and the information we had, and our first reading was sent to various state agencies, we had an opportunity to comment, and I don't think we received any negative comments or any requests for more information. But before proceeding to a vote, it is important to have some information about the project presented, the application. And when we get to ordinance six seventy-six, which is the rezoning, we'll do a similar approach, but it's a little different standard, and we'll do things slightly differently.
Is it appropriate, then, prior to adoption, to, like, have call it a public hearing? Meaning, allow?
Oh, yes, we have to allow public comment.
I know, but in the form of a public hearing, or just public comment? Is that just a play on words?
It's more a play on words.
Okay.
It's the procedure we follow, but it certainly would not hurt to announce that it's a public hearing when we start taking public comments.
Prior to adoption, we just read it, prior to adoption, we will open the floor for public comment.
Mel, did you have a presentation, maybe a short presentation?
I prepared the map that's on the screen there, so people could identify exactly what parcel of property we're talking about. No question where that little thing is moving, that's where we are right now. If I had this thing, you are here, that's where we would be right now. So, it's just north of us, that's where it is. It's about eighty-eight acres, and we had, like Nick said, we had no negative comments from the public or the state. If you're concerned about what is in the area for zoning, that's a partial view of our zoning map. You can see that tourist mixed use is right up here in this neck of the woods, and tourist mixed use is what is proposed for the next ordinance. Interestingly enough, because it's residential low density, it is, it was yellow, when I overlaid that red over the top of it, it turned out to be orange. So, we learn primary colors in kindergarten, so, by gosh, it really worked. I think the rest of it is more appropriate for the change in zoning, so at this point, I'll stop and, again, ask if there's any questions, comments about this.
No other comments? All right, we will move on. Have a motion, do I have a motion to adopt, order six seventy-five?
So moved. You have to at least allow the opportunity for public comment. I'm not sure we did that. Yeah.
I just said.
Yeah, I thought that. Sorry.
Did somebody, did you misunderstand? Is there any public comment? Okay. Good?
Good.
Good. All right, keep the attorney happy.
He's passed.
All right.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Alver?
Yes.
Mayor Caffey?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
All right, moving on, second reading of ordinance six seventy-six. Do I have a motion, read by title only?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any opposition to reading? Motion carries by all, please read.
Ordinance six seventy-six, in ordinance rezoning from residential low density to tourist mixed use, that certain parcel land lying within the city of Mexico Beach, Florida, consisting of approximately eighty-eight acres, and designated as parcel number zero four one three five dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero. Said parcel being vacant property located in the north Twenty-Second Street and north Thirty-Eighth Street, all as more particularly described in the body of the ordinance, repealing all ordinances or partial ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing that this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. We'll now open the floor for public comment. Mel, is there anything different you have for this than what you had?
Well, I just wanted to let the public know that when we change this from residential low density to tourist mixed use, what does that really mean? A lot of folks probably don't take the time to go to the LDR and read that, so I thought it was very appropriate that we at least refer to this. And in essence, what this tourist mixed use does, it's an integrated mix of resort uses that are predominantly tourist-oriented, and seasonal in nature, development will be designed to encourage connectivity among the uses, and cluster to the extent practical to provide open space and to protect environmentally sensitive areas. The uses may include single-family, multifamily, and ancillary uses, hotel, motel, and other temporary lodging units, neighborhood and community-scale commercial, beach clubs, and other recreational uses, public and private uses such as offices and services, religious institutions, marinas, and water-related facilities, infrastructure, entertainment facilities. Now, if you look at what tourist mixed use, further into it, mixed use means you can't have just one use. In other words, the Corey family, whoever develops this property, can't put all residential units in there. That will not fly, because this says here that at least three of the allowable uses must be developed on the subject property, of which shall be a residential use, and none of which may be less than ten percent of the total land area. In other words, you refer to these uses here, you got to use residence use as one of them, and the other two can't be less than ten percent. That's all I have.
Okay.
Let me add a couple of boring lawyer comments. So, the prior hearing was a legislative hearing, this one is, according to judges and lawyers around the state, this one has to be a quasi-judicial hearing, which basically means a different standard of proof, but it also requires that, before we start deliberating, that everyone take a moment, if you've had any conversations or collecting information on your own, either with the applicant or among the public, just that you disclose those briefly and summarize those before we start.
Okay. Does anyone have, has had or has had any of these criteria that were just described?
Thank you.
Okay, we have not, so now we'll open the floor for public comment concerning ordinance six seventy-six. Any comments? Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Alver?
Yes.
Mayor Caffey?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Punt.
Yes.
All right, second reading, order six eighty-five, do I have a motion, read by title only?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, any opposition? Please read.
Ordinance six eighty-five, in ordinance amending ordinance number six fifty-one, adjusting the rent rates to be charged for these municipal water sewer system serviced inside and outside the city limits of Mexico Beach, allowing for senior citizen discount and vacant lot rates, repealing ordinances and or partial ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, and providing effective date.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Returning order six eighty-five. Please call the roll.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Alver?
Yes.
Mayor Caffey?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Punt?
Yes.
Moving to six eighty-six, do I have a motion, read by title only?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second, any opposition? Can you keep up?
Yeah.
Please read.
Ordinance six eighty-six, in ordinance reestablishing a sanitation service in the city of Mexico Beach, prescribing certain uses to be charged imposed for the purpose of funding said service, providing collection practices, amending and replacing ordinance number six forty-three, and repealing any partial ordinances in conflict therewith, providing penalties for violations thereof, and providing effective date.
Motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Call the roll. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Alver?
Yes.
Mayor Caffey?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Punt?
Yes.
All right, six eighty-seven is the second reading. Do I have a motion, read by title only?
So moved.
Second. Please do so.
Ordinance six eighty-seven, in ordinance for the city of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the city's leave no trace ordinance, providing definitions, modifying the scope of the ordinance to cover all personal property, except listed exceptions, providing more detailed procedures for picking up discarded items and procedures to retrieve discarded items in some cases, providing procedures to establish a violation occurred the prior night, repealing ordinances or partial ordinances in conflict, providing for codification, and providing effective date.
Okay. Motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Alver?
Yes.
Mayor Caffey?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Uh, no.
Mr. Punt?
Yes.
All right, moving to resolution twenty seventeen dash twelve. For, we call for a resolution, I mean, read, Mel, could you grant us for this?
Sure, many of you know that there's been a constitutional revision commission appointed by the governor to look at all of our laws at this particular time. One of the things that we hold dear to municipalities are home rule powers, and there has been some talk about some legislators wanting to get that changed, so the state would have the total control over us, instead of us having our own home rule powers. So, what this is, this is a resolution stating that we want to keep our home rule powers. This will also be sent to people on that commission, as well as the governor, the Northwest Florida League of Cities, House and Senate delegation from Bay County. So, this is simply our way of saying, don't change it.
All right, do I have a motion, read, resolution twenty seventeen dash twelve, the title only? So moved. Motion is second. Any opposition? Please do so.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash twelve, a resolution of the city council of the city of Mexico Beach, Florida, supporting all legislative efforts to protect and strengthen the rights of citizens of the state of Florida to govern themselves under municipal home rule powers conferred upon them by the Florida Constitution, urging the twenty seventeen dash eighteen Constitution Revision Commission to protect and strengthen municipal home authority and further restrict unfunded state mandates, directing the city administrator to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Northwest Florida League of Cities, the Florida League of Cities, members of the Florida Legislature, members of the Constitution Revision Commission, and any other interested parties, and providing effective date.
Thank you. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Alver?
Yes.
Mayor Caffey?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Punt?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, other business, first is planning and zoning form, city administrator.
As you know, we've been short a couple of people on the planning zoning commission we've recently lost to, and with this appointment, now that takes us to the five members of the commission itself. So, assuming Mr. Masters does get approved tonight, he will make the fifth of the five pending members. We still need two alternate members, however, because they're important people to step in, in case someone on the commission itself is absent or away on vacation or something. So, by all means, if you have someone else in mind, we're still looking for a couple more volunteers.
Okay, is it, is this, has this been vetted by any, I mean, has the board interviewed, or is this just an application?
This is Mr. Masters, who occasionally attends some of our meetings.
Okay.
Insofar as vetted, I didn't call for a credit check or anything like that.
No, no, but I mean, we, somebody knows him, and he's been to some meetings, and I mean, I just don't believe, or at least I don't mind that. All right, so is there any comments from the council? Is there a recommendation?
Recommendation to adopt? Second.
Or, appoint.
Appoint. Wrong word, thank you.
Okay. We have, you're still second, that, aren't you?
Yeah, you do.
All right, is there any discussion? Is there any opposition?
I hope not.
All right.
Bless him.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, Philip, you awake?
Yes.
All right, come on.
Uh, this is kind of, actually, it's a mistake that I made, but it's to ask the council to surplus the playground equipment at municipal park. We started tearing it down, you know, we got to the end of the calendar year, we have to have everything installed, and we're going to get our reimbursement back. So, we went ahead and, we started getting our stuff in, so we went ahead and started tearing the park down. Adrian then come out and reminded me that we needed to surplus this. So, my request to the council now is to surplus the equipment at municipal park, and to be completely honest with you guys, it's already gone.
Does it look good in your backyard?
Well, we saved everything that was saved.
That's good. I'm sure you can find it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
All right. Motion to surplus the equipment.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Second.
Who's going to second that?
He did.
All right, any opposition?
No.
Thank you. All right, Trankel Harbor, Mr. Wallace?
Uh, I just noticed that the Trankel Harbor group has offered to give the fire department fifteen thousand dollars. And I don't know, seemed like the attorney had some questions about how we're supposed to handle that. And I can't, oh, is this it?
Yeah.
Good. I can't see any point of talking about this anymore. I think my suggestion is we accept their offer.
Have you seen that?
No, I haven't seen it. I can summarize it.
Thank you. Please do.
I fit it all on one page, I'm learning. But I did a quick memo. The process, since this is right-of-way, it's not, it's not deeded property that we own like normal real estate, it's abandonment or vacation of the right-of-way, as opposed to a regular sale. Case law says you can't sell right-of-way. If you sold right-of-way, really all you're doing is selling the public's use to use that area. But we can abandon right-of-way, we don't have to keep it forever, and the test is whether it's in the public interest and general welfare to abandon the right-of-way. So, you've got to make a determination of whether it's good for the public to get rid of this right-of-way, and the money that may be donated to the fire department is not really a factor in that. They're free to donate money to the fire department, but this is not something you should think of as a traditional sale. You should think about whether the city really wants that boat ramp property or not. Is it more of a problem than a benefit? And if it is, you could, you could abandon it. The process, though, is almost, almost exclusively for cities, is to do it by an ordinance. You're absolutely required to do a public hearing. So, we haven't noticed a public hearing. The way to handle it, though, in my opinion, would be, if you're inclined to move forward on it, you do a first reading on an ordinance, which is no big deal, let's just get the word out to the public, and then on the second reading, you hear from everybody, you get input from the public, get input from people, whether they think it is important to keep it or not, and that'll help you a lot in deciding where to head on this.
Well, the city is liable for anyone that's injured on that property, correct?
That's correct. That is certainly a consideration.
Okay.
At the last meeting, the mayor asked if Mr. Pugh could redo some of his figures and kind of compare that property to other canal property, and so, he did provide this And so, uh, he did provide, uh, this afternoon, a revamped, uh, presentation. So it's on the screen even as we speak. And if Mr. Pugh wants to come and say his piece, by all means, now's his time. Thank you.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak again. Good to see you again. There were a couple of folks weren't here last time, so. Um, to bring kind of everybody up to speed, it's, we're going to go through the agenda here. We've got a property review, follow-up from last month's meeting, uh, Mr. Mayor asked us for some takeaways, newly requested data, which we've provided, um, some considerations, uh, that we, we have thought of, um, with the land. And then we have an updated revised final proposal, um, which we've actually increased that for you. So if we could go to the next slide. So this is the property in question. So this is the property in between Trankel Harbor East and Trankel Harbor West. Uh, it's the old abandoned, um, boat ramp, 37th Street Public Boat Ramp. Just provided some, some information here from the Platts, uh, where that, where that, where that is. So when we came and spoke last month, we provided a property review, uh, the initial value assessment, uh, Mexico Beach, to all properties that were listed for sale less than 180 days. We came up with a, an average $5.48 a square foot. That was per square foot, uh, of the land value for a property in Mexico Beach. Mr. Mayor asked us to go back and look for canal front property specifically. So we have done that for him. Uh, we went back, we, we pulled that information and as, you know, it's $10.99 a square foot. So almost double, uh, the original, uh, what we are proposing. So here's the properties. The properties are underneath, each one of those properties sold within the area of, of where we're looking for that abandoned property. Again, $10.99 a square foot. So the one call out is developed canal front. So the, all of the properties that we could find, there was not another boat ramp that we could find that was sold or available for sale. All of these properties are developed, they have houses on them, and they have established seawalls. Um, so if we go to the next slide, uh, this is just a, a review of the, the, the last time. Here we go. Considerations. Um, so we're kind of comparing apples to oranges here. Uh, the 37th Street Boat Ramp is, is not technically, what I would say, um, a developed piece of land. It doesn't have a seawall. Um, there would be probably some pretty excessive construction costs to get it up to where you could put it, if you wanted to build anything there. So let's go to the next slide. So the considerations for comparison. So we did some due diligence, and there's 24 linear feet in between Trankel East and Trankel West. So the estimate that we were provided, um, was $400 per linear foot to put a seawall in. That does not include demolition of the existing ramp. It does not include backfilling or grading of that, of that area. We made the assumption that the, the council could probably do that with the equipment they had, so we left that out of the quote. But the cost would be $400 on the low end, um, to, to get that property with a seawall. So next slide. So this is our final proposal. Based on the data that we provided over the past two months, we've got square footage of 2,309 feet. We are agreeing, yes, with land value of $10.99 a square foot. Estimated kind of devaluation, uh, 9,600. So we did increase our, our proposed from 15,000 to 20,000. We thought that was a very fair, uh, and final offer for, for the abandoned property there in Trankel, uh, between Trankel East and Trankel West. So if there's any questions, concerns?
Are you an accountant?
An accountant? Somewhat, yeah. No, quite frankly, I'll tell you, I work for the Home Depot and I manage about $2.5 billion worth of inventory for all 2,000 Home Depots.
You understand.
Yeah.
I like numbers and I remember numbers, so. So then this is our proposal. Again, kind of open up any questions, concerns?
So I'm asking the attorney, how quick could we get the money?
They can give you the money tonight if they want. It's a donation, it's not.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah. We're accepting, we're accepting donations anytime.
That's right.
So, so what we need is?
We need, we need to do the process.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We can't.
You might want to accept the money, maybe others won't. I think you gave a great presentation. However, what you, the cost for you to create what you want should not be our concern. So throwing out the money of how much a seawall and everything, that's not our concern. And not my concern, I'm not speaking for anybody, not my concern. Do we have to get rid of that property? No. We don't have to get rid of it. I think 20,000 is way too low. Because what you're going to do is to make probably four boat slips.
And we can only put two.
Okay, two boat slips, and they probably would, if you rented them separately, what are we looking at, 25,000 a year? And that, that's the information I've gotten from other realtors around here. So I think 20,000 is way too low for donation. Our fire department is in drastic need. And.
I implore you, if you want to proceed, focus on whether the boat ramp is beneficial to the city or not.
I want to read what, what we have in front of us before we continue on.
I just voiced my.
The financial compensation to the city should not be a factor in the city's evaluation as to whether the abandonment is in the public interest. I can't stress enough, we're, we're treading, we're, we're getting outside the scope of what is, not only have we been advised of, but what is, what's the law? We, we have to decide before we're, we're placing a value on something that's not appropriate to do. We may all have a number in mind. I didn't write this. I, I'm only reading what we were given. I assume everyone has this.
No.
Well, that I must try.
I'm not the least bit concerned with the cost.
Being, the first step is, does the city see this street between the two buildings at Trankel Harbor as something that we want to continue on?
Well, it is a beautiful piece of property.
We've got some lovely pictures if you'd like to see.
Right, and I see, I think 20 grand, I, no, no, wait. I'm not the least bit concerned about the cost or, or the, uh, donation. I, I can't see any point of the city maintaining that. And, you know, if somebody can roll down that and sue the city for broken legs or whatever, it doesn't look good. I'd like to see somebody take it and do something with it that would help the looks of the city. Again, I can't see any point of the city maintaining it, or keeping it, period.
We've got a couple of pictures, and I didn't put it in the, in the deck. But the, the amount of damage that's done, because Linda, you had said that.
Right, and I was just there this last week, week before, so.
So, so as a citizen, you know, I wouldn't want to launch my boat on the boat ramp as it is right now with the crack that's all the way through it. If you were to put a 30-foot contender and back it down, that boat ramp would probably, would probably break and, and collapse.
Your justification is, is so noted that we all understand that the boat ramp, as a boat ramp, would not, could not be functional without expenditure mode. It's do we want to abandon?
Okay.
That's the question.
So.
That's the question.
How's it get a vote on this?
Well, I think almost, wouldn't the best way and ways go ahead and do the ordinance and let the people talk then? We don't have to pass the ordinance, but we can have it there. Here are residents, which is what the ordinance is supposed to do. Say what we would be thinking about abandonment.
It takes an ordinance to do this.
I think that's what I heard, is that not correct, sir?
I have seen, on rare occasion, the city will do a resolution, but you absolutely have to have a noticed hearing so that people know what's going on and that they have an opportunity to provide some input.
And we always have a, a right to say no with their resolution or ordinance at that time, but that gets it out in front of the public.
Right, and I, and I agree with you. I think that is the proper way, is to have a first reading and see who shows up and tells us that we shouldn't do it, could and shouldn't do it, can do it, or might want to do it. And I want to, it is very difficult for me to not think of a value for that land versus what we're obligated to talk about here tonight. I mean, it's, it is difficult to not think of abandoning something that has to us, not to him, but to us, has some value. But I don't, I, I don't know based on what we've been advised and what we've been given, that is, that's the procedure. Like it or don't like it. That is what it is.
So if we step forward, go back to Trankel Harbor and see if their donation, they'd like to donate more.
I can assure you that, that is as high as we were able to go, so.
Okay, so then is it just, I think, without a motion, is it the, is it the,
Yeah.
The acceptance of the council to issue, uh, through mail to our attorney to prepare an ordinance for a first reading? And then will, it'll be noticed, people show up, or the law?
The other advantage of an ordinance too is, we want, the other advantage of an ordinance is we want to, if this.
I like an ordinance, I'm, I'm not for a resolution.
Yeah, it also, it also establishes clearly in a recorded document that that ordinance longer exists.
That's right. Okay, so that seems to be, everybody's okay with that, then we'll pass that on. We'll see what it looks like, we'll see what feedback we get, and we'll proceed on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, Chief?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have, uh, four things here. I want to read a letter that we have received in regards to a house check after a residential alarm. It says, November the 9th, 2017, 7:30 a.m. Just wanted to say thank you to the police for checking my vacation home on 106 South 35th Street yesterday. I live in Georgia. The cameras inside my home sent a motion alarm, and then they all went out. After the police responded to check my home, everything was fine. We've been coming to Mexico Beach for over 30 years before buying a vacation home two years ago in Mexico Beach. This is one of the reasons that we love this town. Please pass this on to the police department for responding to my home. Thank you, the Coleman's. I just wanted to note that a couple of officers responded to a residential alarm from Georgia, we made communication with property owners, we've done other ones in the past, but it was just nice to feel appreciation of that.
Absolutely. I can share next.
The monthly report for the past 31 days, we responded to 200 agency calls for service. We conducted 3,125 building and business security checks, and we conducted 37 traffic stops. Also during the course of the month, we made three arrests. Two of the arrests were related to a warrant, and one was related to a traffic stop. We had six regular citations, 37 traffic warnings. We had one burglary of a vehicle, one burglary of a residence, and 18 bear calls. Obviously, this is the time of year that bears will be out, so we're asking the public first. Best they can to secure the trash that became official. If you have a bear call, then we'll come out. We do have less lethal ammunition, so if we do respond, we'll have an indicated with white orange tape shotgun that's dedicated for less lethal ammunition. And it's a bean bag or a rubber ball that has been proved by the official law light. It does not injure the bear, it makes a loud popping sound, it lights up their finding, for lack of better words. Uh, but we will make notification prior to, in the event that there is a, um, a bean bag round to start in the city. Uh, we had one vehicle accident with an injury, four regular accidents, two overdose medical calls, one disturbance of verbal, uh, being short of a domestic. One hit, one call, 15 information reports, one distressed swimmer. Third, uh, three suspicious person calls, we had 11 eight to another agency, three domestics. 12 medical or sick that we responded to with, uh, fire and rescue. Seven residential alarm calls, uh, seven animal complaints. We received a complaint from a citizen about a dog that was on the beach. It was a authorized dog to be there due to the disability that the person had. But we are limited to what we can ask the person. Long as the person has a dog on the beach and they have somewhat control or control of the animal, then by law, that's all we can do in a disability. Dog of the citizen, the citizen had a dog on the beach, they took offense to it. But the person that had the animal was in control of the animal. The captain actually be the one that responded and did adjust the situation.
Let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
Is serviced animals?
Yes, sir.
By state statute, are they allowed on our beach?
It is under control, yes, sir.
Does the state require a service animal to have a license?
If they're under control, yes, sir. That's by a voice command.
So, so that supersedes our, no dogs or no pets?
The Disability Act, yes, sir. And I'd be glad to forward to each of you the actual, um, verbiage of the state that's put up.
No, no, I, I'm asking, I, I have never, I've just run into this, I've always.
This is the first time in the three and a half years I've been here where we had a citizen complain. And as best attempt that we could to inform the complaining party, because we did make contact with them.
Yeah, I, I just was curious, so I'm not judging, I'm asking if that's the, the person that, that, that has the service animal is entitled to be on the beach, therefore the dog is entitled to be on the beach?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But like I said, this is the first issue we've ever had that a complaint was made. But like I said, we did follow up on it, and as best that we could try to resolve it with the complaining party. To include Mr. Melvin, we've seen something else. Uh, we had two, uh, national crime information hits, that means the persons were wanted. That was the two of the arrests. We dealt with one mentally ill, incapable person. And we had 19 suspicious vehicle calls from the citizens. So I do appreciate the citizens for notifying us for the see something suspicious. We've had a lot of issues with thefts in the community. Most of it's fishing equipment, vacationers leaving their items out. As best that we could, as much notification, that's one of the things I'm going to cover here through some information pamphlets. It'd be a lot easier if everything could go in and secure their property instead of leaving it outdoors. Uh, we've had several fishing boats from the storage facility that, uh, in fact, we had five or seven the last week where, um, persons unknown had gone to the property and removed their fishing boat. So unfortunately, we just need to secure the items. We know we knew on this may vary town, but truth of the matter is, it's not. Unfortunately, the element. But that's pretty much all I have for the police report. Also, in front of you, I've got an information packet on some vehicles. I did a breakdown of the cars that we have. We have seven full-time officers and six functioning police vehicles. Of the six functioning police vehicles, I've did a breakdown. Over the past two and a half months, on vehicle 19, we spent $433.89. Vehicle 20, in the past eight months, we've spent $2,876.72 cents on repairs. Now, vehicle 20 on the back page, I've also done a breakdown of the bag. We spent $2,376.72 on a 2010 Dodge Charger that's only worth $2,923. Vehicle 26, which is one of the newer ones we have in the fleet, the last 20 months, we've gone and spent $297.28 because it's still under factory warranty. So obviously, the newer vehicles, compared to this car that we made. Vehicle 30, 10 months, we spent $55.79. Vehicle 31, in the last 12 days, we spent $981.13. Now, I do appreciate City Council authorizing us to go into a new vehicle. It has been ordered to evolve forward. Pay warrants already been completed, PO and everything's already signed. I've also contacted Dana Safety Supplies, and they're outfitting the vehicle. So we should have one new vehicle within two weeks. I spoke with them earlier today. That's a good start. However, I have been contacted by Parker, they have, uh, an older vehicle that they were going to give us because they knew the problem we had with the cars. The problem with older cars are we're buying older problems, and we're going to put money back into it. The vehicles that we have this past week, I had three of them go down in two days. So we had one vehicle, what they call Hot Seat, that ran for a week and a half, 24 hours a day, for about 10, 11 days straight. Now that vehicle's having problems. So we seriously need to think about maybe getting some more vehicles or something that's, because we've spent $4,000 in three and a half months on vehicles that is.
I think we talked about that during the budget time.
Yes, sir.
I think that's been handled and is being, is part of the, part of the plan.
Yes, sir. And I do appreciate, that's why I said earlier, I do appreciate the bid that I've been done, but I just wanted the council to be aware of, you know, the excess money that's going out on that. The other thing that I presented to you, there's a corporation called Law Publications. Now, obviously, this is the packet. It's got multiple pictures and stuff of different parts. It is an information packet that, um, several agencies, local, submitted. Obviously, nothing is free. What this company's asking for, and I'll date a copy of their letter of advice, that they come into the community, they speak to the businesses, and they try to promote their business in the magazine. But in the magazine, what we get for public safety is information booklets, um, dealing with the public safety that you would hand out free of charge to every resident in town for those who deliver to you, or all of the churches. And how the company and corporation makes the money is from the advertising that, from business to business, X amount of pages gets, say, $200 for their publication of their business. St. Joe's currently using this, and also in it, it deals with how to deal with cybercrime, fraud, scams, and things that appear out in the turn of the city, like people doing telemarketing and things like that. It addresses identity theft, it addresses. It addresses identity theft, it addresses items to not leave outside, the easy items that could be stolen. But I'll leave available to anybody who wants to see this. It's free, but what they're asking for, and I made copies of the letters for you to look over, if you will allow this company to come in, it's a recognized law enforcement, it's not just a local, all of the United States, and they give free education and publications to the community. But at the same time, we all know nothing's really free. And how they make their money is from the advertising space after the information is in the articles here. So they'll advertise Mexico Beach, whatever business, there's like twenty-some businesses that they will recognize. They don't go into the residents, they don't go into the neighborhoods, they stay strictly at the businesses. So if you would just think over that, I think it'd be a good way to get some information out to the public. And at the same time, for the children, those stuff that come in on vacation, they've got information books and other little handouts, it's all free. So, but on the back end, obviously, they have something too, if they have interest. Any questions?
Okay, so it's not free, the businesses pay to put their ad in there. What is it costing our city?
Nothing is the city. Nothing comes from the city.
It's from the businesses, okay.
And what I would do, I would individually go to all the businesses before it's approved. And one of the latter pages in here, it's a sign sheet authorizing down, like third or fourth page back, authorizing the distribution. And I've already pre-filled it out, it's not just submitted, where it's saying that they'll go in, be as a community, be as a police chief, and I'll go to all the businesses before they come there to let them know exactly what they're going to be doing. I met the young man, it's a part of the company, it's a legitimate company, he's a real nice guy. And I think it'd be beneficial, one, for the advertising, I think it's all good, but three, or two and three actually, what can be given as a give back. And the third part to this is the information that can be disseminated to the community about some of the problems that we're having in the community. It's just something else to offer the community, it's free.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Question for our chief?
Yeah, one thing. In the future, when you present some information about vehicles, would you include the mileage?
Yes, sir. I've got that, I think, on the back page and on your handout. So I've got the monetary values for each side of each vehicle.
Okay.
And it's got the mileage. You miles to save, it'd be ninety-three thousand or a hundred and something right now. Because trying to find a taper trail of some of the vehicles in maintenance from previous administration is, it can kind of, well, I couldn't find it, that's the bottom line. So this is just an assessment that I've located over the last six and eight months.
All right. Thank you. Dan?
All right, so we've been awarded several equipment grants over the last fall. Value is up to seventy thousand, and we ended up getting all of them. But one of the grants from the state, which is Adrian's going to address, is twenty-eight thousand five SBA. Acquire some safety compliance. We have a safety inspection coming Friday, and it's not going to go well, our station is not inhabitable, so it's going to fail in almost every aspect. Plus, we're working on it. We're about out of money as far as we can put into. As far as getting help from the community, there was a lot of talk at the council meeting, myself and Travis are the only ones who've done any work, and no one has called me or come by, that I know there was a lot of discussion.
Getting used to that.
Well, it was just brought up in the council meeting that we can rely on the community, and unfortunately, that didn't work. So we put our own time into it, and we have a little bit of money left to spend, and it's about nine thousand dollars, it's not going to go real far. Servpro completed their mold remediation. Phillips crew tore down the back half of the building, which was a great help, that would have cost just a ton of money to do, and they did it for dumpster costs. So the major areas that need repair are the stormwater drains. I believe Phillips crew can do that, but the parts and drains are expensive, too. We need a bathroom remodel, a kitchen, and then we need drywall repair and paint throughout. So eventually, we'll need to replace the roof, that can wait. But like I said, I don't know where the grant's going to stand with safety compliance with the state. There's a timeline on it, and if they say you're too far off, we just don't know how that's going to go Friday. So unfortunately, I'll have to get back with you next meeting, let you know what they said on that. But it's, we've gone about as far as we can go at this point. I have about nine thousand left to spend, and we'll spend that at Lowe's and do the repairs ourselves, and that only goes so far.
So any donations would be accepted?
Yeah, we're looking for any help we can get. So we also got big life restoration equipment, but that was volunteer funds were spent on that, so the city didn't spend any money, but now we can, jobs are actually commonly done that. So we're continuing to improve our service, but we're spending more money on volunteer money than that's coming back here on that side.
So we need more money, and our fire department is in dire need. Do we have any money for, where can we get money from our city budget to help our residents? Because without a fire department, you know, what are our options?
We spent all the impact fee, like that's what we spent to do that, which we had approval to do. There's nine thousand left, that's almost accounted for with equipment I need, or I mean materials to finish what we did. I haven't seen anything, I haven't talked with Adrian. Their discussion about the reserve fund seems to be the only place, but I know that we didn't, I was told we didn't want to use that, so...
All right, that was my next thought. I don't think we want to use reserve fund on anything most of us think is frivolous. However, I'm not sure that the fire department at this point is that frivolous, because if we don't get it up to code, and if we don't get the grants, then we're all going to be paying through our noses for insurance, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm thinking that maybe we need to take some money out of reserves to get, to help jumpstart this fire department again. I don't want to spend the reserves, because in emergency, we're going to need it, but I'm beginning to think this is an emergency.
And I think, if I'm correct, I think we would have to, if we're going to hire it out, we'd have to advertise it, put it up for, get us that correct Adrian, and maybe have someone come in and finish it. We did a lot ourselves, but now that we're getting into some major repairs. Phillips guys are great, but they're so taxed already. I mean, they've done a lot, but he's got one guy that can do most of it, so I think maybe contracting out might be a decent idea, to not put too much burden on them.
Where's the money from bench for our fire department? That's where that all grew from. That was the whole reason we got...
So a twenty thousand dollar donation would be well received by some people.
It would, it would not finish it, though, just so we're clear, I don't want to give you false hope.
I know, but...
We need seventy thousand to finish this. And that's a rough estimate, I'm not a contractor, but I've done a lot myself, I'm sure learning to be one right now. Unfortunately, only one other volunteer, Travis, our number two guy, is the only other one putting in the time. Maybe he's the only one that has the knowledge, I'm not sure.
What do you need done right now?
Drywall, plumbing, and then we're going to add a kitchen. But the plumbing's somewhat major, because you've got to add drains where the kitchen is now, and then come in and finish the drywall. I think the stormwater drain they can get to in the, probably in a timely manner, correct? I mean, it would be too expensive to hire that out, wouldn't it?
It's going to be expensive anyway. It'd just be cheaper for us to do in-house, but we, mother works got a lot to do, I can't possibly tell you what sort of time frame.
Labor always costs more than the material.
How much drywall do you actually?
Not a lot. Basically, you know, maybe if you could get a painter or a drywaller to come in, I think your major costs are going to be adding your kitchen back in, your bathroom remodel, and your plumbing. Now, if we shop that out individually, which I could do, I think we could get the cost down, but it's going to be significant, sixty thousand maybe or...
So I threw out the idea of taking some reserves to help this, to move this along. I don't, I don't like to use it for frivolous things, but what's the rest of the council's feeling?
I'd love to stay the course. Hire a company, come in, give us a presentation, we're looking to raise the money, and I think the course we ought to go.
Okay.
That's likely. You get into remodeling, you get into doing what Daniel, Danny and them are doing, if you don't, you've got to have a master plan, or either you will just, you will spend ten thousand here, ten thousand there. We don't even know if the people are going to be receptive to this. We're receptive to what we heard tonight, to some degree, I think that would be a fair statement.
So we'll get an idea Friday?
We don't know. I mean, I don't know if what people have to say is important anymore or not.
Well, when these people come Friday. When these people come Friday, they'll, they'll give him some kind of an idea.
And that had money set aside to do it, and the problem is, even if we don't go with the fire system, we can't dissolve the fire department because we have to have that to be a city. So even if we choose, the citizens choose to go to attend, we still need a building.
My point is that we sat here and devised a plan to fix the problem. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of supplementing additional funds from someplace we don't have, other than reserves, until we, until we stay the course and see what happens. That's, now, if there was less money, I might think differently. There's not, I mean, that's...
I don't mind loaning, if you want to call it, from a fund to it, however, any loan you expect to be able to pay it back, and we don't have right now, there's nothing there that says it'd get paid back.
So we stay the course, and I have no problem with having, you know, hiring that person and having him come in and tell us, this is the course. At what point will we even get any money in, when we start to assess? So where are we looking at getting any money in?
Well, the aggressive plan, I had it put together, which was not heard, that was me, I asked for that, I was asked to fix it. It's March thirty-first, so, and that's why we did that aggressive plan. From the sound of it, it looks like that will be delayed thirty to sixty days, just by getting it out to the public, that's the general, that's inside understood from you guys. And so if we delay that thirty to sixty days, now we're looking into the summertime.
And you have to report by June to see...
I think it's June twenty-third, I'm trying to look, but it's in June.
So if we, so basically, we, if we went with this plan, your aggressive plan, we would start getting money in the end of March. And if we delay it, we might not have money in in June, when you come in.
Yes, the aggressive plan is March thirty-first, bills will be due. Now, we wouldn't have all of it, because like she said, the question rate's going to be what it is.
Eighty percent.
But as soon as it starts coming in, we would, we would be able to start making things happen, interviewing full-time personnel, et cetera. We got a place to put them, though, so there's still a thirty to sixty day, I don't know how quick remodeling the station goes, you know. We'll do as much as we can, and we will continue to do that, but it's just me and Travis.
Was the March date, is that, was that the discussion, the distinction between sending out the bills ourself, trying to collect them versus putting on tax bills? They're on tax bills, it'd be more like December, probably.
Yeah, well, what it is, is the first year, we don't have time, we're going to go ahead and bill it individually, and then next year, we would collect, and we didn't get, but there's enough overlap that our plan, it should, it should come through this month.
We missed the tax bill deadline, so it's at least another year off.
Yeah, that's where I was...
And I wasn't here, so we knew we missed that when I came on.
So if we start getting, gathering money the end of March, what is your educated guess that, would we have enough time to even put a dent in what is needed to have these in your June meeting for them to say, okay, you're on the right track?
June's a progress rate, not a completion.
Right, okay, but I mean, so that leaves us, what, two months?
Yeah, it puts the deadline close, depending on station remodels, and we really start pushing it. And this is, I mean, a lot of people said originally when I tipped this job, it can't be done. What can be done? But it's, it's not at a great cost. I'm putting in about a hundred hours a week right now, trying to get these things done, and I'm working on it every day. So a lot of work is going into this stuff, on top of these grant applications, and then it's taxing Adrian, too. I'm bothering him pretty much nonstop, getting help, so...
Good.
It's taxing the city as a whole, you know, it's not just taxing me, I'm, Phillips guys are getting taxed, I'm bothering Mel, you know, everyone's helping as a group.
So basically, we need to stick to your aggressive plan.
Here's, here's my solution to the aggressive plan, if you do want to wait. Now, if we do wait and make it due April or May, I'm not opposed to using general fund money after the assessment is passed, before the money comes in, as long as we're paying it back. But we can't start using that money until it's approved, not if maybe it's going to end up...
And we can't hire, I'm sleeping in what is not acceptable in the station condition, but I'm the only one doing that that's full-time, and that's okay. So we can't hire until we have an acceptable station. It's too much liability. The first fireman that sees us will win. So we can't hire until we have that station fixed. I'm a chief, so I'll suck it up, right, but I can't hire six guys and make them do the same.
Well, you might suck it up, but it's not okay.
I knew what I was getting into.
It's not okay.
Okay, other comments? Thank you.
Just a matter of question, this is all. Am I fine to let the people know that they can do that, or not do that, or is it fine for you to have them come?
Oh, oh, back on the...
Yes, sir.
Castle. Why is it?
Doesn't cost us anything.
It doesn't cost the city, and Andy gets notification advertising for the city. All right.
Okay. Helped work. Take it quick.
Mayor, council, my monthly report is the next five pages. I have no intention of reading that unless you guys really want me to, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them the best way I can.
I have none.
I was kind of hoping that...
We don't need you to read it, too.
Are there any, are there any significant?
Nothing special, nothing.
Items that we need to know about?
Negative.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clark?
All right, your financial report for October is in the packet, ignore the top, where it says FY sixteen seventeen, and October thirty-first, twenty sixteen. It is actually seventeen, I just changed the date to old format. The second page, you'll see a lot of pending comments on the cash. Cash was finalized for fiscal year end Friday afternoon, the report was in the packet Thursday, so your next report will have the actual cash amount, because Michael was here with me on Friday, and the cash flowdown is complete, and we are now entering, closing journal entries for the year. Onto street assessments. I assessed Ninth Street, Twenty-Ninth Street, Thirtieth Street, and Twenty-Fourth Street for the paving projects that were done. All of Twenty-Fourth Street has paved, all of Twenty-Ninth Street has paved, we're waiting for one on Ninth Street, one on Thirtieth Street, and all paving money has been received. The last thing I have is a letter received yesterday. On behalf of the Division of the State Fire Marshal, we are pleased to inform you that your grant application submitted under fiscal year eighteen. Florida Firefighter Assistance Grant Program has been approved. The Bureau of Fire Standards and Training carries out responsibilities of administering your grant. The approved project is to purchase five self-contained breathing apparatus not to exceed a cost of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. There will be no cost to you unless, of course, you exceed the maximum amount of the award. So in order for our department to participate in this grant award, we are required to accept the grant award within thirty calendar days of receipt. I'm asking council to accept that grant today. It's not your package, it came in yesterday. If we have to wait, I mean, we can, but I'd like to get this project started.
Okay, could you give us what, what the motion you need to be?
Motion to accept the grant from the Florida Firefighter Assistance Grant Program in the amount of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty cents.
Can you repeat that, Jerry? So moved. I second that emotion. He, he moved, he moved. He woke up and moved, and I second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the fire grant.
Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition?
No.
No.
And that is my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mel?
How much time have I got, Your Honor?
Hardly any. Jerry's in charge of that.
My basketball game starts at eight-thirty.
In that case, I'll give him a brief version, that'll make everybody happy. The only thing I really have this evening is that we did, as you know, receive the technical assistance grant for our comprehensive plan process. It's divided up in certain deliverables. The first deliverable was due the end of October. We did comply with that. I did send a bunch of stuff into the state for their review to make sure we complied. I got notifications today that we have complied with the deliverable number one, and they'll release us the funds for that one here very shortly. The first one's only eighteen hundred bucks, but eighteen more than we had before, so... The first one's only eighteen hundred bucks, but eighteen more than we had before, so we'll gladly take it. And we're on to the second deliverable, which is due by the end of November. So we'll keep on task and keep moving that down the road. That's it.
Now...
I had one thing I wanted to say. I think we'd all agree that it's not necessary for the attorney to wear a suit and tie at all the meetings.
Let me ask this before, before we, is there any announcements? In light of what happens frequently, tonight is a classic example of when we get to the department reports, the exodus is just the diehards out there. As chairman, I'd like to see us move the department reports for one meeting a month, one of our meetings to the beginning of the meet, because there's some good information that, that, that some folks... And then you'll have more, you know, you feel maybe a little more pressure you've got to do. But I don't care which meeting, I really don't, I just think that it needs to be moved up so that there's more likelihood that the circulation of what gets said from out of the departments will be, I think you'll be surprised how much...
Mr. Mayor, I recommend it at this night period, because we always have more of our citizens here, and if it's in place to do that...
Yeah, let's do that. Is that agreeable with everyone? Just move that, and you can fork it in right after scheduled appearance.
And I will have a resolution at the next meeting to adopt that change.
Oh, gosh.
Our agenda's set by resolution, at least it's not ordinance anymore.
Yeah, but it just says it has to be on there, it's not the...
It has an order, it has order of the year.
Can we go ahead though, and even though it's...
Who did that?
Ordinance's long ago, but we got rid of the ordinance, it's easy, it's a resolution, easy change.
There's still something, still something...
Sure enough.
Can we start it next month without it?
Well, we'll do the resolution at first. At our fourth meeting, in the second meeting, we'll...
Good.
I think we all...
You're on the ball.
Motion for adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
There's still something, yeah, still something.